Alright everyone, we'd like to start the regular city council meeting. So if everyone could please have a seat. I'd like to call the regular city council meeting of city council order at 6:05 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Navarrete.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Tillman.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Patton.
Here.
Smith.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Before we begin, I'd like to recognize our commissioners and department heads. We have in the back our fire chief, Glenn Bacherd, our police chief, Kevin Kolosch. We have our deputy commissioners, Josh Brown, Jericho Thomas, Zach Quackenbush. We also have in the back from our community economic department, Donna Leskey, Val Williams, Chief of Staff, Deanne Jeffrey, and our deputy clerks, Jessica Coffey and Quinn Bailey. Before we get started, I know residents have been calling the office and probably been calling the alderman about the city's action against Park Harbor. For years, the city has been taking measures to keep Park Harbor up. The owners of Park Harbor have shown that they are slum lords. They've walked away from the property, which is leading the city to repair water main breaks to the tune of $237,000. We've had serious issues at the complex, two intentional fires set that could harm our public safety personnel. And we also have to go over and pick up the garbage with our manpower and our public works department, and the city had to take action. So our goal is to make sure that residents receive assistance from the city. I know our attorneys have been in contact with each resident to make sure that the city does so in a manner that's compassionate to our residents, but also making sure that we, safety is our number one priority, and making sure that we get a hold of the property so no one else can set intentional fires at the property. Again, the city took this action, and we want to make sure that we honor our residents and make sure the city works with residents who will get, want to get relocated, so we can do that. Our next item on the agenda is our public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on any item on the agenda? If so, please step up to the mic. But, I'm sorry, before you do that, I'd like to call up Pastor Stokes to say a word of prayer before we begin. Pastor Stokes?
Good evening, ma'am. Good evening, council and city officials. Let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you tonight, and we give you praise on and thanks for your kindness, your tender mercies toward us. We thank you for your keeping power. We thank you for this season of Advent, that you show us that you intervene in the affairs of men to bring about the good for people. And we thank you that in your wisdom you do use people. And we thank you for the individuals in this room who you have appointed, who have been elected, who have, who served this community. We thank you that in your wisdom you use people to bring about peace and prosperity. And we thank you tonight, Father, that these men and women who are under the sound of my voice, they do labor to do that for Calumet City. We thank you that your eyes are upon this city and that your ears are open to our prayers. Your word says, "We should trust you with all of our heart, lean not to our own understanding, but in all of our ways acknowledge you, and you will direct our path." So we thank you for directing our paths tonight, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Stokes. Again, we are at the public comment. If anyone from the public would like to comment on items on the agenda, please step to the mic.
I'm not, I'm not very good at just speaking here, but I want to, no one will know what's going to happen with the people of Park Harbor. And what about the, the people that are suffering with no lights, no power? I want to know what's going to happen to the owners and how it's people coming into these buildings that you close up and live in there? That's what I want to know, and what you're going to do about it?
I would ask every resident that's here after the meeting, we can come in my office and we can talk about it. This forum is for you to talk.
Yes, sir.
But if you guys, after the meeting, you're more than welcome to come in my office. We can tell you what the city is doing. Our goal is to make sure that everyone is safe.
I understand that, sir. I appreciate what you're doing, but that ain't helping our folks. And we suffering. That's all I have to say, sir, and I appreciate you, the whole council.
Again, any resident that's here after the meeting will be more than happy to talk to you this session. It's just for you to, public forum is just for you to state what you want on the record, and the city will give back to you. But you, again, more than welcome to come in my office after the meeting. Yes, sir, you can step to the mic.
Yes, Mr. Daddy Jones. Yeah, because of that fire at Park Harbor, because of the people just moving into that place, because I know you guys can't, you know, police the place like that, you know, and you guys are doing your best, you know, as far as trying to keep us, you know, keep us going up in there. But like, as far as that fire was concerned, there are six mobile homes that have been affected because after they put the, when they, after they put that fire out, we still had power. So I guess the fire chief had ComEd come, switch the, one switch from off one of the transformers, which somehow, you know, affects us. And so now there's senior citizens, including myself, you know, that have been without power since October 5th, and we have called ComEd, and ComEd said that they need, you know, some type of verification or some type of, you know, some type of words from you guys so that they can't come and cut that switch back on just so we can't have power. And, you know, I've been calling Inspection Services, and, you know, I'm just trying to figure out how come we just, you know, it's not our fault that whoever set that mobile home on fire, you know, that we have to actually, you know, pay for that, you know, and, you know, it's just, it gets real cold in these places, and we have no refrigerator, we have no furnace, just, you know, because the power's out. And, you know, I just want to make sure that my, my voice is heard off that, you know, I mean, like I said, these are senior citizens, my dad and my, my neighbor, they're sleeping by the stove just to keep warm, you know, and I can't, unfortunately, I can't because my stove is, just doesn't work, and, you know, it's just, I'm just trying to figure out how come ComEd can't come and cut that switch on just so that, you know, we can have power? And, you know, that's, right now, that's, you know, that's one of my biggest, the biggest issue right now, besides the people who are just walking into that place because we don't know who, you know, God knows who these people are. I know there's been a lot of shootings around there just, just because of that. So I just wanted that to be heard.
Thank you. Again, after the meeting, more than willing to talk to everywhere, each and every one of you together regarding what the city's going to do.
Okay.
Again, the city is...
I mean, I know you guys are trying, you know, like picking up the garbage for the public works, you know, and as far as like those water breaks, and because whoever the person owned that park just decided just to, you know, just to be, like you said, a slum lord, just, just left us all there like we're trash.
Is there anyone else who would like to step up for doing public forum?
Okay. My name is Autumn. I also live in Park Harbor, and we've been there for almost six months. So there's like a number of issues that we've all been facing. Firstly, our neighborhood has been receiving mixed messages from inspectional services as well as other entities claiming to represent the city. And all of these notices are about our right to stay in our home and access basic human needs in our home. So some of us have gotten notices taped to our door about eviction. We have not, but every single person in the park has received a letter dated November 7th from one Dominic Lanzito, claiming that the city, quote, "will remove every tenant living at my house and any other tenants at all other units in the park by the end of December," or by the beginning of December, actually. We all received this notice probably a week after their arbitrary deadline had passed. And they insist that the city wants every inspectional issue and past due bill for all units to be resolved, or no one can legally reside in any unit regardless of their state of ownership. When contacted by a neighbor a few weeks ago, his employees stated that no removals will be immediate in direct contradiction to his letter that he delivered to all of us. They specify nothing for homeowners that have legal and up-to-code properties. Inspection Service has also been talking to neighbors but has given no formal notices despite their importance to our community, these conversations. They informed many residents that Park Harbor will no longer have water once the main pipe bursts, despite recent plumbing fixes. They also told me and many people that, you know, residents were going to be removed from the park, which never happened. No formal notices have been given to anyone regarding our ability to get water despite the fact that they went around telling everybody that once the main pipe bursts, it will no longer be fixed. They have also delivered no notices about our ability to receive power and our ability to stay in our home. On the subject of human needs, many of my neighbors have been left out in the cold by inspectional services. This council is apparently aware of the arson incident that occurred at 44 Oak Court that's across the street from my trailer, which caused a power outage for several units. Few of the people in this room, including me, know actually who started the fire and why. Nothing was done about it, but everyone in the park knows which homes received power that was restored and which did not. My home, the power was restored the same night. My neighbors has been asking anyone who will listen to restore their power, they have been without light and heat for over six weeks. It has been below freezing for 60% of those days. Days! Not to speak on the nights. Our community does not understand why power has not been restored to all properties with current and paid electric bills. ComEd employees have confirmed themselves that the equipment serving the powerless trailers is fully operational and that all they need is a permit to restore power. Rather than providing this permit, inspectional services insists to everyone that restoring power would be dangerous for residents. We know for a fact that all electrical connection between this derelict and hazardous property and the main power source has been severed and has been for weeks. ComEd also confirmed this. All I ask is that legal residents are either allowed to stay in their home or be allowed to move our homes, which is our legal right. There is no reason that this fear mongering should be happening around our community. We have a right to water and power and the right to pursue a living situation that provides us those things. We are being made to believe that the city doesn't care about us. Park Harbor may be an overlooked and unowned property, but longtime residents are still there and the legal acquisition of homes is still occurring there. My spouse and I just bought our very first home at Park Harbor and legally titled it in the state of Illinois just a few weeks ago. We have a right to stay in our first home. Also, I know that recent efforts to purchase Park Harbor by neighboring mobile home operators has been blocked by inspectional services. Inspection Services and other parties are trying to spread fear in our community and they're not acting in good faith.
Can you please wrap up, please?
Okay, sir. We have a right to clear communication from authorized officials only. I would like to know what your place is in all of this communication that has been occurring? Do you know Dominic Lanzito? Was that your letter, and if so, why wasn't your name on it?
Ma'am, please wrap up.
I'm done.
I'm not gonna...
That was a question.
Okay. I'm not going to answer a question, ma'am. I just offered everyone to go in my office afterwards. This is not a back and forth.
Okay.
Please finish your comments so we can move on with the city council agenda.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I'm also a resident of Park Harbor. My name is Levi. I am concerned by the lack of transparency about what is going on. Like, I received the letter from a lawyer who I don't know telling me that the city is going to seek a court order to condemn my trailer. The letter doesn't say who the lawyer represents. My trailer is my home, contains all my possessions, and I hope you can imagine the fear and uncertainty that I felt when I read that my home was at risk for condemnation and that a random party says the city is seeking to make my family homeless. Like, reading that the arbitrary deadline in the letter for the absent park owners to pay their debts or have the park condemned had passed a full week before I received the notice of what was happening. I don't care what debts the park owners have, I have no control over their actions and no responsibility for their failures. The people of this park didn't ask to be put in this situation, and many of us simply can't afford to leave it. The city has known the situation at Park Harbor for a long time. You know the owners are absent, you know the water bills aren't being paid, and that the property has been amounting code violations for years. So knowing all this, I want to know what the city's plan was for keeping us, your constituents, safe and keeping us in our home. The only plan that I've heard is from this lawyer, and it was threatening, and it was scary, and it was unclear, and it has not been followed up whatsoever. And so I'm asking the city to help us, and I hope you will respect us and our homes by being clear and direct. Thank you.
Again, everyone, as I stated in the beginning, the city is extremely compassionate in this situation. We want to make sure everyone is safe. I invite everyone in my office after the meeting to explain the course and the route the city's going to go, including the system residents. We want to make sure that these slum lords are brought to justice, and we're going to take every action that we can from the city to ensure that we assist you guys going forward. Is there any other resident who would like to comment? If not, let's move forward on the agenda. Item number five on the agenda, approval of minutes. Everyone had the minutes sent to them for the meeting, so stated on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the minutes, or are there any corrections to the minutes? What's the move? Motion made by Alderman Williams to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second by Alderman Gardner. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Navarrete.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Tillman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Smith.
Thank you, everyone. Item number six are reports of standing committees. Finance, Alderman Gardner.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Public Safety, Alderman Williams.
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Public Utilities, Alderman Patton.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Alderman Navarrete and I will be getting together to schedule a joint Public Utilities and Public Works Committee of the whole meeting to discuss issues related to water projects and future water projects in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Ordinance and Resolutions, Alderman Tillman.
Thank you, Mayor. Real quick, on Monday, December 5th, the Ordnance and Resolutions Committee held a committee of the whole meeting. At the meeting, we discussed several items. One of those items were, was discussion and possible action regarding Park Harbor. The council unanimously agreed, unanimously agreed at that meeting to provide financial assistance to the residents of Park Harbor, to assist them with the issues that they're having. And some of the other actions will be on a later agenda that will be voted on by council of the whole. We also discussed possible action regarding the park of River Oaks. No action was taken, however, that should be on the next meeting, and we'll vote on that as a whole. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Health, Education, Welfare, Alderman Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to call a meeting the week of December 19th with the committee. I will send out communication to see what days work best for you regarding an academic enrichment opportunity for every student, school-age student in Calumet City. That's all.
Thank you, Alderman. Permits and Licensing, Alderman Smith.
No report.
Thank you, Alderman. Public Works, Alderman Navarrete.
Just to echo Alderman Patton's announcement, yeah, we'll be looking to hold a joint meeting in regard to upcoming water projects. And also just a reminder to residents, if they still have leaves out there that have not been rigged to the parkway, please contact Public Works. They can get out there still until we get our first snowfall, which hopefully is, is sometime in January. But, and then we will start our, our snow removal process from there. That's all I have this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
City Council Reports, Alderman Navarrete.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a thank you to everyone who came out to the VFW to support their spaghetti dinner. This was a tradition that they had up until COVID and 2020 hit, where every month where there's a 5th Wednesday, they have a fundraising spaghetti dinner. So this was the first spaghetti dinner since, since early 2020, so it was nice to see everyone out there. Again, thank you to Mr. Webb and his students at TF North and their history club who came out and served. Our police department, fire department, Public Works, who all came out and supported. It was a good time, and I'll be sure to announce the next spaghetti dinner. The next 5th Wednesday of a month isn't until March, so I'll make that announcement closer to March. But every time there is a 5th Wednesday in a month is when they will have their spaghetti dinner. Also, would like to encourage residents to practice their faith here and celebrate the Virgin Mary. Every night, starting tonight at 6:00 PM, there will be a rosary mass culminating Monday with a very beautiful mass of the roses, celebration followed by a reception in the gymnasium that's at St. Andrew Church located at 768 Lincoln Avenue. That's all I have this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson, second ward.
Thank you, Mayor. I had an opportunity to take a look in and find out some information about the pilot program in the alleys on Herbert Preyclaw. They're doing fantastic work. I can't wait for that to be completed. As many residents have seen, we're almost finished with construction with Buddy Bear Car Wash. The security fencing went up today. The protective fencing went up last week throughout the alleys, so look for some information on that. I would like to congratulate the first student of the second ward, Cortland Wilson, on receiving the Community Outreach of the Year Award by the Southland Chamber of Commerce and Economic Industry yesterday evening, along with one of our new businesses, Rucker Holding, and our Cook County Commissioner, Monica Gordon. Congratulations to the Chargers. Tomorrow will be their 15th banquet. We are proud of the students in Calumet City who are also athletes. On Tuesday, no, Sunday, December 11th, I am sponsoring, along with two nonprofits, a basketball camp that is free. It's at 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Sandridge Community Center, 600 Oglesby. Again, that is free. Ages 10 to 17. Tuesday, December 13th, is the second installment of my 501(c)(3) pilot program. We are going to be discussing the power of words and grant writing. That seminar will be at Impact Church at 4:15 Saginaw, to begin at 6:30. Saturday, December 17th, is the second ward annual giveaway. The Amazon deliveries were delivered today. This has taken a life of its own. We will partner with Blue Cross Blue Shield, who will provide fresh produce to anyone in Calumet City. The Amazon gifts, however, are just for the second ward. We also have partnered with two nonprofits, so we will have coats and toys, thanks for, thanks to Toys for Tots. On Monday, December 19th, we have a very sick baby in the second ward, and M&amp;J Pancake House has agreed to open up their doors on the day that they're closed. We're going to have a pancake fundraiser. Every pancake fundraiser plate is $20. The proceeds will go to benefit baby Harley, who was born as a micro premie weighing one pound in the month of May. She has been at the Ronald McDonald House for over 250 days and is now, as of today, hospitalized. But she will be released to the second ward. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Tillman?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the residents that came out to the final town hall meeting of the third and fourth ward this past Monday. I especially want to thank the police chief, the fire chief, and the commissioners of Public Works for coming out and answering all the residents' questions. I especially want to give a thank you to Public Works for aggressively addressing most, if not all, of the issues that were presented on Monday already, and today's just Thursday. So I appreciate you all for doing that. We ended the meeting with an end of the year party that we surprised the residents with, so we appreciate everybody that came out and participated. Also, the third and fourth ward is having our annual toy drive. Donation boxes are in the third ward located at Pete's Grocery Store, Nikki's Giro and the Dollar Tree Store. If you want to donate, just go ahead and drop off your presents at one of those donation boxes, or give my office a call and we'll come out and personally pick it up. 708-891-8193. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Williams, fourth ward.
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, God makes all things possible. I think Alderman Tillman has took everything that I had to say, so. Now, two, just want to thank everyone that participated in the third and fourth ward, the last meeting of the year. I want to thank the mayor for sponsoring the dinner for that, for that evening. Also want to remind the residents of the Secret Santa Toy Giveaway that's happening next Saturday at 11:00 AM at Ginger Ridge, 1954 Memorial Drive. 11:00 AM, we will be giving away toys to all those that, from Calumet City that attend. If you are not from Calumet City, feel free to go to Alderman Woman Wilson's event. So we look forward to seeing you there, and that's it, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Fifth Ward, Alderman Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor. Not too much tonight, just want to be brief. Would like to continue to encourage the fifth ward residents to contact my office with any issues, concerns. Also, as we approach the holiday seasons, I would like to encourage, encourage residents to check on seniors, check on neighbors, to see if they have needs as far as foods, food or toiletry items. If they don't have those items, please have them contact my office, 708-891-8195. That's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Patton, sixth ward.
Thank you, Mayor. One quick thing I wanted to address tonight, the vast majority of calls that I've received over the last month and a half have been regarding snow route signs that have popped up throughout the sixth ward, and I just want to address a couple of things. First and foremost, there's been a snow route ordinance on the books in the city of Calumet City since before almost all of us were sitting up here, with the exception of maybe Alderman Williams and...
No.
The mayor, Williams, on the council. So if you want somebody to blame, blame the two of them. This ordinance has been on the books for a number of years and has been implemented slowly over years, you know, first starting with emergency routes for ambulances to the hospital, and then increasing to, you know, enforcing it along the snow routes. The reason for this is not to punish residents for parking on the street in front of their homes. Especially in the sixth ward, a number of the snow routes are on the 160s streets between State Line and Wentworth Avenue where the streets are narrow, the snowplow trucks can barely get through there with the street open. And when, when there's cars parked on both sides of the streets, it's very hard for snowplow trucks to get through there. We've seen over the years, cars being damaged, cars being blocked in, driveways being blocked in. And so we're, we're trying to put something in place that's been on the books for a long time, but we're implementing it now to create a safer and quicker snow removal process for everybody throughout the city. It's inconvenient, I understand that, but after every big snowfall, invariably, all seven of us get calls from our residents about why aren't the streets being plowed? Why are... seven of us get calls from our residents about why aren't the streets being plowed? Why are cars being plowed in? We've asked repeatedly for people to move their cars off the streets voluntarily during large snowfalls so that we can get the streets cleared out and opened up. We have to do something to make sure that everybody's got safe passage throughout the streets. If you live on one of the designated snow routes, it's something that had been designated by the engineers years ago as a reason. And so please just adhere to the signs. You know, there are a few unique situations, including areas where handicap parking signs are in front of houses. If that's the situation, please give me a call. I'll work with the mayor's office and the police department to make sure that we can figure out a situation there. But other than that, you know, this is something that's been on the books for a long time and something that we're going to have to figure out how to work through together to make a safer community for everybody after major snowfalls. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Seventh Ward, Alderman Smith?
Yes. Just want to, first and foremost, wish the seventh ward residents a happy holiday and also want to remind them to continue to report any suspicious activity, vacant properties. Also, upcoming meeting, Town Hall, is next Saturday, December 17, from 10:00 AM to noon. Refreshments will be served. It's the last meeting of the year. Please come on out. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Item eight are informational items to be placed on file. Before you have items 8A through F. Are there any questions regarding items 8A through F? If not, can someone make a motion to place these items on file?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, second by Alderman Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Item nine are new business items, new business items 9A through 8. Are there any questions regarding new business items 9A, 1 through 8? If not, can someone please make a motion? Alderman Wilson, second by Alderman Gardner. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Navarrete?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, Alderman. New business items 9A through 1 through 8 has passed. Item B of building permits, Alderman Navarrete?
Make a motion to pass. Items B1, new fence construction, so presented.
Motion made by Alderman Navarrete, second by Alderman Wilson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Navarrete?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Item C are resolutions and ordinances. We have two resolutions before the council. Is there, are there any questions? I know the family of Mercedes Mallett will be here at the next city council meeting. Want to not only give our condolences to Mercedes. She was not only a community activist, but she worked at the Secretary of State's office for years, was involved in local government. So I'm looking forward to her family coming to the city council so we can recognize her as well. Alderman Tillman, C, resolutions and ordinances.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item C1 and C2 as presented.
Motion made by Alderman Tillman, second by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Navarrete?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Item D are financial matters. Financial matters D1 through 26. Items D1 through 22. Is there a motion to approve items D1 through 22 as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Patton, second by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, can you please call the record on items D, financial matters D1 through 22?
Navarrete?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 23, Alderman Patton. Is there a motion to approve item 23?
Discussion?
Motion and discussion, Alderman. Alderman Patton?
I'm not going to make a motion. I'll second for discussion. I'm not going to make a motion.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve and then second for discussion?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Williams, is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Second by Alderman Patton. Alderman?
I'm just curious about this invoice in particular. I know in the past, we've utilized Ezde for transporting the deceased throughout town. So number one is, you know, why are we paying outside? Number two, it looks like this is a pure home company that is responsible for building the city for cleaning up at least the police department.
So Chief, do you want to explain?
Sure. So you're correct. Ezde used to perform all of the transports to the medical examiner's office. Probably about two years ago, let's say, we switched over to a private company doing that. And there was some issues with the vehicles, with the personnel that weren't properly trained in lifting the cots and everything. So it was sent over to a private contractor probably two years ago, maybe a little bit more, anywhere between the last two and three years. So that was being done by a private contractor. Ezde used to do that, you are correct in that, but probably have not done that in like the last two, two and a half years.
This company is also cleaning the police department?
Yes.
So there's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Navarrete?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Items 24, 25, 26. Is there a motion to approve items 24, 25, and 26?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Gardner. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll on items 24, 25, and 26?
Navarrete?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Unfinished business, Alderman Smith?
No. Not that's time.
Thank you, Alderman. Unfinished business, Alderman Patton? Alderman Gardner, unfinished business?
No unfinished business, Mayor. Thank you.
Alderman Williams, unfinished business?
Just a reminder again, this toy giveaway, December 17, 11:00 AM, 1954 Memorial Drive and the back of Ginger Ridge at the gymnasium. It is drive-up, so please come out. Hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Unfinished business, Alderman Tillman?
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Alderman Wilson, unfinished business?
Thank you. I would just like to, the residents who are not getting information, I do not send out the newsletters. Those newsletters are mailed from City Hall. Unfortunately, two of the mailing routes in the second ward did not receive a newsletter. I do ask that you subscribe to AlderwomanWilson.com. My social media plugins are on that website, so if you do not have social media, you can still read that. I also update the information. You can also call or text me directly at 708-586-4990. That's 708-586-4990. A reminder that we are having an event on December 17. A portion of the event is for the second ward only, but the entire event is open to anyone in Calumet City who would like to attend. Like Alderman Williams said, if you're not from Calumet City, please visit us at Ginger Ridge on that day. I want to just to offer my prayers to all of our residents that are here in this chamber. You elected us. We lead our wards and we pray for you. We pray for protection, redemption, and transformation. We are not going to leave you because you are of us. With that, I say amen and thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderman Navarrete?
Always a tough act to follow. I'll do just a quick update for residents that are calling about. An update on truck parking ordinance, I'll be sure to have that next meeting. We did have some meetings in Alderman Tillman's Ordinances and Resolutions Committee along with, I need to have some discussions with Public Works regarding some signage, but I'll be sure to have an update at the next meeting regarding truck parking on State Street, in